Hello, welcome to this workshop meeting of the council of the town of Oakville. We have regrets from councillor Longo and councillor O'Meara. And I would ask members of council if they have any declaration of pecuniary interests to provide. And madam clerk, I don't see any. And with that, we have a presentation. And madam CEO, we're in your hands.
Hello, mayor. Mayor, members of council. The first thing I'd like to do is introduce our new commissioner of community services, Paul Demasco. This is his very first day today. So normally, he would do the introductory remarks to this presentation, but I thought that was a little bit much for the first day. So Paul comes to us with a wealth of experience. I think you'll find that as you meet with him over the next while. He was most recently at Halton Hills and well over 15 years at Mississauga. So he brings a lot of experience to us in the way we move forward on community services. So very exciting to have him on board. So tonight, the community services staff and all the teams that have supported the preparation of the Parks and Rec Parks Recreation and Library Master Plan are here tonight to present that plan to you. It is a draft plan. The purpose of tonight is really the opportunity for council to delve into the plan. We're looking forward to your questions and your comments on the plan. It will be going out to the public for further consultation, and we expect to bring a report back to you in the fall for consideration of the master plan. This is a workshop meeting that was just established through your procedures by law, so there will be no delegations, but they have the full opportunity to participate in the consultation as it moves forward. So as you know, master plans really map out our anticipated growth impacts for the town's programs, services, and infrastructure. They advance council's long-term strategy and the vision through medium-term planning. They are used to understand the needs going forward so that we can actually properly plan for our community in the subsequent years. So as you saw from the fire master plan that was in front of you just a few weeks ago, and you will also see this plan coming forward in the fall and the transportation master plan later on in the year or early in 2025. These plans provide for the needs to accommodate our growth going forward, but they also look at the community. We have quite a diverse community, so planning for that diverse community and understanding the trends and requirements and issues that are coming out with each one of those master plans. So the refine, so the inputs go into our 10-year capital forecast, and we consider the prioritization as we do our annual budgeting each year. So the master plans are also essential for our development charges by law, our development charges funding. The growth components that are identified through these, each one of these master plans then are the basis of our DC background study and our DC by law that we anticipate will be bringing forward through '25 and '26. So ensuring we can get the most out of the development charges is important. Since the needs outlined in these master plans, we'll also need to be balanced against our infrastructure renewal program that has developed mostly through our asset management. And council will hear about more on the infrastructure renewal and the climate change response as you move into the workshop on the rainwater strategy that we scheduled for June. So with that presentation, I do want to turn this presentation over to the directors in community services commission so they can present to you the draft Parks Recreation and Library Master Plan. Chris?
Good evening, Mayor Burton and members of council. Can I get the next slide, please? Next slide, please. Good evening again. As we start the workshop this evening, we thought it was important to inform you exactly what the master plan will do. The master plan will employ evidence-based decisions, approaches to identify and prioritize community needs until 2051. It will improve the equity by addressing gaps across the town. It will identify growth-related park and facility needs. It will inform financial planning and future budgets. The master plan will align with related town plans and studies. It will also support the town in becoming partner and grant-ready should there be grants available. It will be a living document, adaptable to change, to trends and growth over the life of the plan. And lastly, it will be updated every five to 10 years. Next slide, please. This slide is illustrating how the Parks and Rec Library Master Plan aligns corporately and is informed by other plans. At each step of the way, there is community and council consultation and then council approval. The council strategic plan is the overarching plan, which informs the official plan. Both these plans inform the Parks, Rec, Library Master Plan. Similarly, the master plan informs and is informed by other plans, such as a land acquisition strategy, the Parks Plan 2031, the Culture and Events Plan, just to name a few. Coming out of the master plan are business plans related to the recommendations within the plan, which can then become part of the 10-year capital forecast or annual budgeting process where the necessary resources are approved by council. Public community consultation is considered once again at the business plan and the annual budget stages. We are not asking for council tonight for any approvals this evening. This information is information sharing and your first opportunity for feedback. Eventually in the fall, we will bring the master plan back to council where we'll be seeking council endorsement of the plan. Next slide, please. In terms of ongoing and future processes, the master plan will identify comprehensive funding strategies, commit funds to specific projects through council approvals. It will address site-specific planning consultation and design processes. It will negotiate partnerships or land purchases, and it will also address asset management initiatives in terms of our pair and our replacement program. And lastly, I would just like to add that the public consultation we've done for the master plan started prior to the council's discussion on Midtown and the meetings that had been held on Midtown. So any comments specifically related to Midtown and the evolving of Midtown have not been captured during our public consultation discussions. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Julie Mitchell.
Thank you, Chris. Through you, Mayor Burton. I'm thrilled to be here tonight along with my colleagues to talk to you about the future of Parks, Recreation, and Culture and Libraries in the future of Oakville. As you can see, sorry there, as you can see by the slide, we started this process well over a year ago and have gone through a comprehensive process, including extensive consultation with the public as well as yourselves and our many community stakeholders through our sport organizations and other community organizations to lead us to today. And we're excited again to present the information to you with the draft actions and hear your comments and feedback so that we can take that back and consider it as we also head out to some more community engagement in our next step. And as Jane and Chris said, our final plan will be coming back to you in September. Last week, we also presented to Oakville Public Library Board, and they had the opportunity to ask questions and provide input as well. As, sorry. This master plan is a little bit different than previous ones. One, it's our first one post-pandemic, which has really brought forward how our residents respond to Parks, Recreation, and Library services, as well as how they prioritize their importance throughout their lives. As well, we are maturing as a town, particularly in our infrastructure. So we're really prioritized taking a look at our assets, how they're relevant, how they can absorb some of our growth capacity and that type of thing. So it's a little bit more of a focus on looking at the relevancy and evaluating our existing assets, both because of the age and some of the purposes that they're designed for. So you'll see a number of big moves identified within the plan. These are expected to be some discussion generators, and our consultant will get into them a little bit more. But as Jane and Chris talked about, obviously, we have a lot of growth coming up, so looking at our community needs from a facilities perspective, but also what's going to be occurring in those facilities, so what types of activities we really need to prepare for. And then again, a number of them focus on looking at the existing assets. Where can we absorb some capacity with our existing assets? So we wanted to really take a critical look at how we're managing those assets as we look for replacement and revitalization of those. And number eight there really speaks to, as Jane and Chris had already said, we've got the detail work still to come. So these are really high-level recommendations, but we've got to get into the detail of each of the plans that are recommended in here, which will really focus the conversations on specific recommendations. So an example is a racket strategy that covers both indoor and outdoor future of racket sports in Oakville. So before I pass it over to Steve, our consultant, I just wanted to acknowledge and thank all of our staff teams, so Parks and Open Spaces, Oakville Public Library, and the Rec and Culture team, as well as many of the corporate services teams that have provided support along the way in this process. I just want to acknowledge, not just for their input into this plan, but the great work they do in delivering our services day in and day out. I also wanted to acknowledge the community organizations. As I said, they've been very engaged and provided a lot of input, valuable input on this process. So we engage with well over 50 community sport organizations and other types of organizations through the process, as well as the community at large who came out in completing the surveys, as well as to our open engagement sessions. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce Steve Langwa, who's the front man for a group of consulting teams. We really wanted to make sure we had subject matter experts that covered all areas in Parks, Recreation, Facilities, and Libraries. So we had a team working behind Steve, and he gets to present the draft recommendations to you tonight. Over to you, Steve.
Excellent. Thank you, madam CEO and directors, for that stage setting. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, for having me here tonight. Very happy to be leading you through this process. Get my bearings here. We do have a lot of ground to cover, so I will jump right into it. Happy to take any questions and feedback at the end. We do have, as mentioned, probably about 50 slides. Some will, some will take longer than others. This is all part of your package, so happy to come back to any slides if you wish to when we get to question period for any questions and discussion that you wish to add. I think the plan's been comprehensively introduced. The one aspect that I will point out in addition to our broad scope is the timeframe that the plan covers. This is somewhat unique in the sense that we really are working with two timeframes, one being the next 10 years. This is something, so any of the actions that you see within the plan have the ability to impact your long-term capital forecast and future, you know, coming year budgets. But we're also aligning with the 2051 population forecast that have been established for your community. So it's important to keep in mind, the plan itself will be updated many times before 2051. But as we relate to major capital projects, it's important that we have those discussions, in particular about land. And it also gives us the opportunity to have discussions with other partners and engaged organizations around future actions and ways to align with these longer-term directions. As mentioned, the scope of the plan is quite broad. We do look at both infrastructure and service delivery, service delivery being just ways to enhance access to services and programs for your residents and organizations. So certainly, it's quite descriptive in the title, but Recreation Facility Services, Public Library Services and Facilities, as well as Park Land and Park Facilities. And we'd be remiss if we didn't start off with just underscoring the importance of these amenities and these services to your constituents, to your residents. Ms. Mitchell will speak to your recently completed customer satisfaction survey at the end, during which, you know, we certainly heard great support for the services that are currently being offered. But we recognize that these amenities really contribute to Oakville's vibrancy, its livability. They provide a wide range of personal health, community well-being benefits to your community. We see more and more municipalities are investing in these, these types of spaces and services as a way to sort of stand out, as a way to encourage investment, and as a way to support their population. Now, building blocks, this is, you'll hear me come back to maybe some of these factors as we go through the plan. We use a mixed method approach. It's very important to note that this is not our plan, as much as we've been, had the joy of facilitating it on behalf of the town and the public library, is really built off of public and stakeholder engagement, demographic analysis, research, and trends. So it's very much made to be, a made-in-Oakville plan that's dynamic and will serve you moving forward. Within the plan itself, there are many decision trees, decision criteria, evidence approaches, evidence-based approaches that will help to make it a living document. I think public engagement was mentioned. We're very pleased with the level of input that we've received so far, and we look forward to going out within the coming weeks to receive additional feedback on the plan itself. We did host a community survey that was available about this time last year. We had over 2,000 of your households complete that, representing about 6,400 residents within the community, so very similar to other, and we've had the benefit of drawing from other surveys that you've done corporately or through the library, for example. We had our public open houses. They were widely advertised throughout the community, offered an opportunity for folks to come out and provide input. So we heard, in particular through those, we had voices from various key interests within your community that wanted to make sure their messages were considered within the plan. And stakeholder workshops, any organization that uses facilities, uses parks, is engaged within these three departments was given the opportunity to participate in those sessions. And we heard specifically from 20 organizations at that time, everyone will again have that opportunity to provide additional feedback on the draft over the course of the next couple of months. Just, I do have three slides here that give you a snapshot of what we've heard so far. We know, I've already kicked it off around being fundamental and essential services, but that really was consistent throughout, a consistent theme throughout all of the input that we received, just how important these amenities and services are to physical and mental well-being. We also recognize that Oakville's a very active community. We do this type of planning throughout the province, and you have among some of the largest sport organizations in provincially, nationally, even internationally in some cases. That's a very engaged group. We know satisfaction is quite strong. We've seen that within much of your recent surveying in particular. Doesn't mean there aren't requests, though, for improvements, and you'll see that documented throughout the report. I mentioned being an active community. That also extends not just to sport, but also to passive park use and outdoor recreation demands. You know, we know the outdoor realm had a moment during the pandemic. Any of the surveying that we've seen nationally suggests that outdoor use continues to remain high since that time, as people have re-engaged and found many new healthy activities to participate in. Continuing on, we've heard, I guess, continuing with sort of the outdoor recreation trend, but not just for that. It's not just about sports. It's about casual opportunities for play. It's about self-scheduled activities. It's things that people can fit into their time and into their day. They don't always need to register and be somewhere Tuesday night at 6 o'clock to participate. So you see a lot of, you know, your drop-in programming, your park spaces and libraries certainly help to accommodate those needs. We heard that residents support additional investment, particularly in spaces that are well-used and able to be used by children, youth, seniors, and families. So that really captures people of all ages. But when we come to some surveying later, we'll see that, you know, youth-based amenities tended to really have the greatest amount of support, for example. We know residents are also seeking greater access to programming. This was something that was partially taken away during the pandemic through no fault of your own, but it was somewhat lost, and you have great facilities, have great programming. Folks, you know, sometimes you're victims of your own success in that way. They are looking for broader programming, both for recreation and library. In terms of library use, we talked with the library board a bit about this, and then they'd certainly understand and advise that, yes, library uses, it might be changing, but it's getting stronger, it's diversifying. Books are still very much very important and foundational to libraries, but there's so much that you can do within those spaces. We heard from organizations, many of them are, you know, have navigated some challenging times during the pandemic, fluctuating memberships. They continue to work to build that back in some certain cases. Shifting gears, we heard some of the older facilities tended to be the ones that required additional attention. I mean, not surprisingly, but they're, they would tend to have lower levels of satisfaction amongst your residents, the older arenas, public libraries that were, you know, showing their age, for example. We heard from various special, special interest groups suggesting that there's maybe a need to, for a framework to help address some of those requests, so the plan does set out criteria in that regard. And we recognize the town cannot be everything to everyone, so partnerships, collaborations will be very vital to moving the plan forward. I did mention, I do have two slides here to just illustrate. You'll find this within the community engagement report that's within your package. This comes out of the 2,000-plus survey that was conducted, and the question was really sort of, you know, where that, where capital investment should be directed. So in blue, you'll see the percentage of respondents that suggested that they support additional spending to improve existing or provide new. And what you'll notice there is certainly those amenities that sort of benefit residents of all ages, park washrooms, park land acquisition, pools, gyms, they tend to be near the top. And those I mentioned that also support children and youth tend to be on that slide as well. So that's the top half of that graph. The bottom half, still, still important, you still see quite a bit of demand for many facility types, but the lower level of demand was expressed for, for those spaces that really support smaller participation profiles, fewer individuals in particular. So we're thinking of saunas, cricket fields, disc golf, for example. Not to say we're not investing in any of these areas. I think it's, it behooves you to consider well-rounded recreation, parks, and the library system, but we do keep that in mind as part of the input that we receive. So a little bit more, I just want to unpack a bit about our approach. I do have, the plan uses a series of provision targets that are built off of population demographics, that are built off of those inputs that I mentioned already. You'll see those, I do have some, a summary of that at the end of the presentation, a nice sort of quick guidebook there if you're looking for that. But they take into account population, distribution, equity, and other metrics that might be vital to that analysis. These targets and the recommendations in particular also consider financial sustainability, co-locations, and land availability. So the plan itself is built from the ground up and is meant to be a dynamic working document for your municipality. So as, as conditions change, and in this case, what you're seeing here is, is a spectrum of, of growth scenarios. We've, we've used a baseline population of 225,000, give or take, depending on the day, that's, that's a good starting point for us. And the joint best planning estimates run to 2051 for a figure of nearly 443,000, so nearly a doubling of population in this scenario. And most of the recommendations that are capital-based tend to align with a population target. So if you grow quicker, if you grow slower, the plan itself should be able to adjust to those changing conditions. There's also several recommendations that are maybe not growth-related, but are still important for the community and council and staff to consider. Those might be assigned more of a timeline, short term being the 10-year, the immediate term of this plan, sort of the things that would impact your 10-year forecast. And then all recommendations, and you'll see this documented within the draft objectives and strategic and actions document, you'll see have been assigned a level of priority. And in formulating the actions, also important to mention, it's not just about building new. In fact, the approach really here is, you know, where there's the demonstrated need to first consider opportunities to enhance programming, to optimize spaces that you already have, then we, then your departments would go about, you know, looking, are there other strategic partnerships that might help us address that demonstrated need? Failing that, you consider looking at what your bricks and mortar opportunities might be, if you can expand or enhance the spaces that you do have. And then finally, failing that, would be looking at new construction opportunities. So it's, the plan is a lot about, it's not just about the new, by any stretch of the imagination. It's about optimizing what you have and making sure those current and past taxpayer dollars are put to good use. The towns, the actions also consider the Town's campus of facilities model. And this is an important consideration when you're looking at the variety of sort of the hierarchy or classification of a variety of different amenities. And I'll use, I'll use, you know, libraries, I think, are a good example. There's Central Library, there, you know, you have one of those within your community. It offers the highest level of service in terms of broad range of amenities and spaces and services. Then you have community library branches, those tend to be combined with many of your community centers. Then you might have neighborhood library branches that are a little smaller, more localized collections and services, and OPL Express types of spaces. So there is a continuum. Not every neighborhood is getting a, you know, has a, has a senior center, for example, or an arena, but rather having a context-specific approach is quite vital to a sustainable plan. This might be well-known to your, to your council, hopefully it is, so I'll try to move through this quickly, but it's important to note just that the changing of the demographics in the community have been changing like everywhere else for, for many years. We know Oakville is, is growing. It is also aging, but still attracting new families and becoming more diverse, many of the, and from a variety of different countries. And newcomers to Canada have, you know, in many cases, some similar interests and some divergent interests. So we'll see that throughout the actions. The next three slides unpack, this comes out of your joint planning, best planning estimates. They unpack some key nodes of growth within your community. These, while there will be growth in many communities, sometimes quite, you know, more gentle growth, these are the highest-growth areas in particular. So you'll see sort of the Trafalgar, Urban Core South and Uptown Core, that, that community, nearly 50,000 people by 2051, high growth. Glenorki, Neogawa, Dundas Urban Core West, a much larger geographic area, has about nearly 40,000. And Midtown Core, this is just population, not population plus jobs. I know there's been many numbers thrown around there, nearly 32,000. So these have become sort of a focus for some of the major capital recommendations in certain cases. You know, taking a step down, we sort of look at those that are maybe growing still substantially, but, but a little bit less so. So you see Joshua Meadows, you know, quite a few areas north of Dundas Street here, Palermo Hospital District, and then further north along Trafalgar Corridor. And certainly, we don't want to forget the more, some of the more localized areas. You'll see this within your more peripheral to established areas, from downtown to Kerr Village, the Bronte and around the Brontico MTSA area, and then along Trafalgar Corridor. So what does that mean? We sort of look and we chunk that out into the various, we used to say quadrants, it was easier when you didn't have a lot north of Dundas Street, but here we are now with six areas. And you still see sort of, you know, 70% of growth being north of Dundas, but every area seeing some additional population that, you know, can be in some cases absorbed into existing parks and facilities, and in other cases, perhaps needing some additional help. So that's a lot of that stage setting. The plan also does have a strategic framework. I won't go into a lot of detail here, but I think what's important is we've been able to maintain alignment with council strategic plan and your four key strategic priorities. So there's been goals established under each of those areas that reflect the key goals of the, of this master plan. And then really the balance of my presentation, I'll be mentioning the objectives. I would imagine we're probably going to have most of the discussion around the actions. Those are, those tend to be the more detail-rich pieces here. We're not going to be presenting all 98 or 100. We're not going to be presenting all 98 or 100. The number might have been changing slightly. Actions tonight, but, but there will be some selected ones that we do want to point you to. So in terms of objectives, again, these are still sort of strategic outcomes, I would say, that are required to meet council's strategic priorities. They've been developed for each of the, the focus areas of the plan. Recreation services, recreation facilities, parks, libraries and so on. So some of the key things that we want to achieve, and you'll see this throughout the, the, the actions themselves, refining our program and service focus, partnering with, with others. And that might be the library, might be outside providers, might be schools in particular, and, and the town has excellent relationships with your school boards that continue to leverage those, those valuable assets. Want to see that continue. Engaging youth and older adults, enhancing equity diversion, diversity and inclusion, expanding arts cultural services and maintaining fair and transparent user fees. So there'll be recommendations that really, sorry, actions that really speak to these within the plan. In terms of recreation facilities, it's a matter of, the, the plan places a key strategic focus on prioritizing facility expansion and revitalization, considering new models for a community space. And what we mean there is, as you have more dense developments, you might be considering, as, as you'd see in, in Toronto, North, North Toronto, Mississauga, you'll see more vertical, you know, spaces within podiums of condo buildings and so on. Might not be something for the, this term of council, but as we work towards 2051, that will become more of a reality. Reimagining single pad arenas, modernizing outdoor pools. We'll, we'll speak to those in a little bit more detail shortly. And supporting sport tourism and sport-friendly facilities. In terms of library services, some of the key priorities and objectives are embracing the evolving role of the library system, enhancing and revitalizing existing branches, providing new branches in strategic locations, evaluating service models, I'm sorry, alternative service models, maintaining high-quality services, consider extending, consider extended hours, supporting at-risk populations and continuing to strengthen that partnership with the town. And lastly, for, for park facilities and parkland, keys are to optimize our sports fields, support emerging sports and park amenities, animate parks and supporting events, mitigate impacts of reduced parkland dedication, activating the waterfront, reinvesting in older parks, maximizing the impact of smaller parks and enhancing trails and outdoor activities. And of course, we can't forget about ensuring financial sustainability and defining priorities. So all of this is represented within the key themes of the plan. These themes will, key themes really provide a narrative throughout the work that we're doing here. I really want to relead you through a number of the higher priority actions, keeping in mind that several of these do extend out to 2051. So first key theme here was preparing for growth and securing our future. As Oakville doubles in population by 2051, your growth-related needs will be significant. It doesn't mean that we need to double your existing inventory of everything that you do have, but it means you need to make strategic decisions around what is provided. What you see here are mostly community center-related recommendations for, and a little bit of is expanding what we have based on growth-related needs and also developing new. And I have, the next slide will show you this, the same list of projects on a map. So, but this, this slide goes into a bit more detail. What's envisioned here is in general order of priority, and, and there's a caveat for the first one, being Glen Abbey Community Center. The priority here is just to begin planning for this. It doesn't mean it's going to be your first capital project that's recommended within the plan. But we, here we have, and in the West Plan area, a tremendous multi example of a community destination, multi-use facility that is, is very well-used. Will have additional growth happening around it. We want to make sure that it's, you know, it's, it's been in place for 40 years, that's in place for another 40. And that means looking and exploring more opportunities to expand and revitalize the center. Key considerations would be replacing the pool, adding new change rooms and a sauna, enlarging the, the change, sorry, enlarging the gymnasium and adding two tennis courts. Sorry, squash courts, get that right. A lot of racket sports these days, hard to keep up. Another item that we'd like to consider, and you'll see where these population targets come into play. So the idea is to have these delivered in and around those, those population thresholds. The first is to your dedicated senior center, Sir John Coburn Recreation Center, to expand and renovate that, looking for more activity space, more programmable space that can serve that community and, and the broader community. And with the aging population, we feel now is the time to really start into that work. You have an opportunity to, to make an impact to the many users and, and future users of that space. Something that's a new, a new item, and you do have elements of this, of this within your 10-year capital plan is Trafalgar Urban Core South. This would be a new library and new community center, possibly developed in phases with the library happening first. This would be, as, as a multi-use community center, would include a gym and swim sort of anchor. So there would be a pool, there'd be a gymnasium, there'd be other supporting spaces like a fitness center. An auditorium allows for an opportunity for more cultural and arts events in, in the northern portion of the town. Not something to rival your performing arts theater by any stretch of the imagination, but rather a community space that can serve multiple activities and, and services. The fourth bullet down is, is consideration of a new library branch at the Queen Elizabeth Park Community and Cultural Center. This was something we, we discussed or had input from the library board on, on the best way to deliver enhanced library service to the Bronte area. So there were different pieces of input around the best location for that. So we'll be reviewing that within the, the final plan. Palermo, this is in your 10-year forecast. We continue to support the establishment of, of a community destination in this area. This would be a library and neighborhood community center. And when we say neighborhood community center, we're not talking gymnasium, or, or sorry, not talking indoor pool, but something that has a gymnasium, meeting and activity rooms can be programmed, can be rented, and really serves as, as a local hub for that community and broader northwest Oakville. Also on the list are, and this is sort of beyond the, the immediate 10-year timeframe, you'll see, similar to Glen Abbey, an expansion and revitalization of River Oaks Community Center, looking at the, investigating the potential of a gymnasium to that space, add a library branch, update the fitness center studio spaces, repurposing potentially of the squash and racquetball courts with an expansion to Glen Abbey should allow for that. And then longer-term, something in Trafalgar Urban Core North. I would mention, Trafalgar Urban Core South and North are both north of Dundas Street. So despite the, the different terminology there, we're talking north Oakville for both of those. This would be something that's kind of similar to, to the Palermo scope and scale of, of facility. So you'll see all of that represented on this slide with the, the one addition. We, we didn't want you to forget about the Central Library replacement as part of the Downtown Cultural Hub Initiative. I imagine we'll come back to the slide as we go through the discussion as well. I will also mention part of our discussion with the library board, and I think some great feedback on the discussion around Midtown and what that might look for, for service delivery, space delivery in particular. And I think we're, we'd have been asked and, and we'll, we'll commit to reviewing in particular for the library needs within the Midtown growth area. So this slide will deal with really things that happen sort of outside of, of your community centers. There's a few additional changes in, in terms of growth-related infrastructure that the plan does advance. Demand for arenas is slowing, so you'll see some other recommendations coming up around rationalizing our, a couple of your single pad arenas. That doesn't mean where you're out of, you know, you're not going to need arenas into the future. Part of it is a modernization initiative, an efficiency initiative, and then slower demand moving forward as the sports, the sports sector in this, in all communities does shift. We're seeing slower demand for, for ice in particular. So longer-term, looking to develop two new twin pad arenas. We don't have locations for these. They might be partnership-based. There's plenty of opportunities. We would just want to sort of plant the flag and, and have those discussions over the course of the next couple decades. But something in North Oakville and then something in South Oakville, longer-term. We heard from community groups about access to indoor turf. A year-round activity was, was a key theme. You have a tremendous indoor soccer center. The soccer club makes great use of it, but other groups have challenges in finding appropriate access to that space. So just exploring options with, with, whether it's with the current provider or as other opportunities arise to enhance opportunity for access to indoor turf fields. We heard from your Oakville Crusaders Rugby Club, they, they came out en masse to our open houses, were concerned about their long-term, their long-term trajectory, wanted to make sure that they were considered within the plan. So we do continue to have a recommendation that the town work with them. There's, I guess, a number of opportunities that, that could be presented to accommodate that club moving forward, and you'll see that addressed within the plan. Racket sports strategy, we're really talking tennis and pickleball. Both sports have strong participation bases locally and, and are going concerns. We've, your community has tried to accommodate many of them on, on shared courts. That's had mixed results. There's a, a need for additional courts for probably both sports moving forward. In particular, pickleball, and, and you do have quite a few shared courts right now, which is a great start, but moving towards more dedicated opportunities as, as, as allows. And some of this might also be revitalization of, of existing spaces. So this is really something that requires a specific study to, to get into the, the site-specific and details of how to deliver on those needs, including again, similar to indoor turf, the opportunity for year-round, year-round play within your community. We're seeing many more indoor court opportunities within, within GTA area municipalities. We're also considering, you know, the opportunity for outdoor skating. That was something we heard a lot about from your community. We're dealing also with a changing climate, so these things are not always congruent. But the, the latest technology really suggests that offering maybe covered pads, things that can reduce sun exposure, can help with the aid of a refrigerated ice plant, can provide extended use throughout the, the winter season. So we want to, the plan includes an action around developing an outdoor rink, open air, so not an arena, but available for unstructured use within northeast Oakville, that area of the community, as well as we have your, your wonderful new Foglers, Foglers property that will undergo a more site-specific planning exercise. But the idea of offering something up there that offers unstructured skating, that might be an opportunity as well. And I don't have it all documented here, but you'll see in a slide coming up at the end, we've identified all of the, the additional things like cricket fields, sport courts, playgrounds, splash pads, all-wheels parks, those are your skateboard, your bike parks, leash-free dog areas, community gardens. I'm sure this presentation is long enough as it is, so I'm just going to skip on some of those, but happy to come back to that more detailed slide as we go. Second theme, and this does pick up, so thanks for your patience. Supporting equity, well-being and emerging needs. We know Oakville is an attractive destination for young culturally diverse families, but the population is also aging. So we need to manage and, and plan for, for these demographic shifts. We, we expect many of the, the youth and sport needs will be most notable in North Oakville, while a range of demands can be expected within higher-density growth areas. Intergenerational opportunities should be encouraged. So you'll see things like updating the youth and older adult strategies, creating and embedding a more targeted program development framework, serving diverse and underserved groups through various initiatives, looking at outreach and alternate delivery models and enhancing within the library system, for example, multilingual collections and ESL programming. Third key theme, so we've talked about on the first couple of slides there about new facilities intended to, and, and expanded facilities intended to serve growth. We also need to turn our attention to aging amenities that could play an enhanced or, or different role within the community. We know your, your facilities and parks are multi-use destinations. Fortunately, they're in great locations that really offer a great opportunity now and into the future. But with the rising cost of land and other funding challenges associated with new infrastructure, it's vital that we first look at these, these facilities to make sure that they're optimized, doing more with what we have and seeking strategic ways to add capacity to respond to emerging needs. So one of the key items here is, is beginning with the master plan and using it to create a capital renovation and replacement strategy that actionizes all of the key recommendations within the plan around existing facilities. There are, shifting to, to specific sites, there are two single pad arenas that are really seasonal amenities within South Oakville, being Kenoke Arena, Maple Grove Arena. They're both around 50-plus years old, 50-ish years old, I should say. And, and, you know, have an ability, they're the great, you know, interesting sites, have an ability to maybe be considered for repurposing or conversion to other types of non-ice sport facilities, park use, general, community use, other sports. We've heard a lot of input, or some input from this, from the community, and look forward to hearing more. The sports field strategy is, is also recommended. And this is something, again, if you think of your sports field, they are large, they are a large portion of your overall active parkland. You know, soccer fields, ball diamonds require acres of land. As we grow and double in population, we want to make sure we don't need, you know, twice as much land to support that, because it, it will be a challenge for, for you to achieve that. But rather, we want to make sure that the existing spaces that we do have are optimized. So that might mean looking at revisiting your lighting restrictions south of Dundas. There's been substantial improvement in the technology around lighting and, and like spillover. As you're getting other growth in these communities, it'll be also important to have additional extended opportunities nearby for them to participate in. So that's something to be considered through future study. And then a parks revitalization study similar to the, the College Park, Campus of Parks Initiative that was undertaken, looking at some key sites, in particular waterfront parks, to enhance barrier-free accessibility. Outdoor pools, your outdoor pools are well, you know, they're, they're well-loved. They're, they're used. Usage has not been increasing with your population. And part of this is the changes in, in how residents interact with these spaces. The opportunity that you do have within indoor pools, the, and, and just the aging amenities that, that are here. Each pool is over 50 years old and does not really keep pace with sort of the new, modern, contemporary pool experience that offers more beach and sloped entry, accessible lifts, accessible universal change rooms, multiple tanks, larger, larger deck spaces with shade, outdoor showers. I mean, there, there's a number of different designs that are, are quite engaging, and other communities have seen good uptake with. So a decision, and if you don't make a decision around outdoor pools, they will make the decision for you, either to reinvest or to consider a different model. So the plan does offer an opportunity to unpack this through, again, a more detailed study, but does provide some direction around consideration of, of replacing three of the older pools within, and lower-use pools within South Oakville, being Bronte, Brookdale and Wedgewood, with a new destination complex somewhere within the vicinity of, of those pools that can sort of punch above its weight and, and, and serve as, as an engaging destination for your community. We'd like to see something like that as well in North Oakville, where you have a lot of new, young families coming in. They don't have the benefit of outdoor backyard pools that many others would have. So having sort of a north and south anchor for the outdoor aquatic experience. And then Lions and Foggerwood, those, those pools are in, have different, unique site experiences there, keeping them open and operational as long as possible, and considering maybe a, a long-term redevelopment of Foggerwood in particular, given its, its ability to serve a distinct community. And then indoor pool, just undertaking a, a study to confirm the function, capacity and long-term viability of White Oaks Pool. That's within a shared use space within, with the Halton District School Board. That's within a shared-use space within, with the Halton District School Board. The town will also expand its support to equity-seeking populations that face financial and other barriers to access and participation. Continued emphasis must be placed on retrofitting public spaces for use by persons with disabilities, with special attention to parks' infrastructure to support the province's goal of an accessible Ontario. So you'll see recommendations around access inclusion here, ensuring that Recreation Connection Fee Assistance Program continues to be regularly reviewed and accessible to those that need that program, refining pricing policy, developing an operating hours plan for OPL, considering the feasibility of embedding additional or extended social services within libraries, for example, and maintaining an overall commitment to universal accessibility and safety. Your residents feel they highly value the outdoor realm, including parks, trails, and the waterfront in particular. They provide respite to their everyday. These spaces were a lifeline during the pandemic, particularly for our most vulnerable, and increased usage remains evident. Passive activities such as walking, hiking, picnicking, special events, nature appreciation, all rank very highly throughout all of the surveying that your community has done, and can be enjoyed by residents of all ages and abilities. A growing emphasis on these spaces and four-season use is among the highest priority needs of your community. A few of the key recommendations here, and happy to go into more detail on any of these as needed. But reviewing and updating that 2.2 hectare, hectares per thousand active parkland target, just making sure that it is consistent with the goals of this plan, with your Parks Plan 2031, and ensuring that it's something that remains achievable and realistic for the town moving forward. That might mean tweaking the definition of active parkland, and something that works for your community. Also recommendations around implementation of the Harbors Master Plan, sort of unlocking any potential that is there within Bronte Provincial Park. Again, we recognize it takes a village that's a great community asset within your community boundaries. Completing an infrastructure condition assessment at Deerfield Golf Course, and reviewing the operational model for that facility, and a similar sort of should-read condition audit and opportunities plan for the Foglers property. Couple more on here. Reducing our environmental impact. We know the town is committed to building resiliency and changing, to the changing climate and extreme weather patterns. We'll continue to support those approaches and help the town achieve its environmental goals through initiatives such as updated facility and park standards that achieve and enhance environmental sustainability through energy-efficient retrofits, the support and expansion of community gardens, and other programming and education-focused opportunities through the library and other departments. Access to data and new technologies is also important, not just to the future of public libraries, but to all departments within this plan. New and emerging technologies help to find efficiencies in the work that you do and support the town's climate action strategies. The application of technology and service delivery can also help in enhancing client experiences and expanding participation. So you'll see, this is, I think, a new element within this plan. You wouldn't have seen this within past ones, but focusing on those opportunities around digital infrastructure, new technology, expanded opportunities within all parks, recreation, and library, and using those evidence-based data-driven assessment tools and guidelines. And the last key theme here is just working together and building inflexibilities. Master plans are long-range documents intended to ensure that the town is on the right course and address the highest priority needs of the community. The specifics of how you achieve this will be identified through the course of the plan's implementation, and in keeping with the broad goals established by the plan and within council's strategic plan of the day. The town and the library in particular work very well together. That shared vision must be extended to other partners, other service providers, agencies, levels of government, and funders to realize the plan. So you see a few additional recommendations up here. Preparation of a sport tourism strategy, in particular, to leverage opportunities in that realm. Seeking, and you've been effective here certainly, but cannot not have a focus on this moving forward. Alternative, alternative funding and cost-sharing approaches. Planning for major capital facilities that includes more consultation, because that is always vital to the work that we do, and developing an annual update within the plan for the community. So I mentioned, I just mentioned these because they're part of your package. There are three slides here. Look at all of the different facility types assessed within the plan. Talk about the current supply, the planning target, and the needs to 2051. The details in the actions talk about how some of those needs will be implemented. That was our indoor infrastructure, moving to outdoor, and keeping with outdoor. There's about 20 different facility types that the plan does look at. So with that, just a reminder of where we're going from here. We're looking for feedback tonight, certainly. Want to then go out to the public to seek input on the draft plan. We'll be achieving that largely through an online survey, and then reporting back to council in September. And then the fun work begins of implementation, when, including several topic-specific studies that I've mentioned so far. So thank you for your patience. I know it's a lot to get through. Happy to respond to any questions or comments that you might have.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. It's useful to those at home who might not have read, you know, the entire report and plan. But you do have questions from several members of council, and there may be more once, once the four I've got get going. And before I turn to council, I just want to ask you, or suggest to you perhaps, I think you're going to hear when you're out consulting the public, once we get past just hearing from the, you know, the users, let's call it. I know that in many areas of town, I get complaints from residents about noise, especially around outdoor fields, and so I imagine you're going to, you're going to need, you may want to have some answers prepared for them. And, and the other thing that I, I think you're going to hear is there's a growing concern about the difference between residents and visitors' usage of our parks and open space and facilities. And we may very well, if you do hear that, it'll be interesting to see what you advise us to do with it. Councillor Elgar, you're first, then Councillor Chisholm, Councillor Adams, and Councillor Sheat.
Thank you very much, Mayor Burton. Thank you very much for the presentation. Nice cold-nosed version there. Question goes, goes back to slide three. Year 2051 in alignment with the latest provincial growth policies? Now, as far as I know, the growth policies with the province for where we have to go to 2051, what they have approved is much less than what you have shown on slide 14 and 18. They had, say, ballparked, say, 350,000. You're running 442,000. Where did, where did that come from? From the province?
So thank you, councillor, through you, Mr. Mayor. I would direct that to our Director of Planning and Growth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you. The numbers that were provided to the consultant team are just based purely on the joint best plan estimates, and those numbers have been presented to council over the last year or so, which was initially, I think, presented to council in August of 2023. So there's consistency in using those numbers throughout the master planning work that we've been doing.
Okay, so they are not based on the provincial growth policies?
Correct, yes. They're based on the Joyce Best Plan, and Mr. Langway, I believe, mentioned that in his presentation.
Okay, I appreciate that. You talk about two hectares per thousand residents, and I know towards the end you say, "Consider alternative funding and cost-sharing approaches." Do you have any ideas, since the province has changed, what we can get for, for parkland? How you propose we can do that without impacting negatively on the constituents through taxpayer?
That is the million-dollar question, I guess, right? Certainly, a lot of this would have, the topic of parkland policy in particular would be the focus of your Parks Plan 2031, and it does have a series of recommendations within that strategy that look to respond to, in particular, the changes made through Bill 23, but several other pieces of legislation in the last number of months. There's a number of different approaches that different communities are looking at. I know you've, as council, have been considering some of those approaches in midtown Oakville, for example. You know, different opportunities for publicly accessible private spaces, strata parks. But the numbers are definitely declining. What you can achieve through the planning act and from development, you know, it tends to be, it's probably a tenth of that target that you've set as a town-wide goal. What I would say is that, and we do this type of planning work throughout Ontario. When I tell them that the town of Oakville and what your standard has been, what the standard is that you're achieving, and it's been declining slowly, so I don't want to say you're maintaining it, but you're keeping your head above water. You are the envy of many other communities that have not had that benefit of land banking and securing, you know, additional lands for future development. So it's not just one thing that you can do, it's a series of strategies.
And the question is, based on the fact you've been doing these master plans throughout many different municipalities, I believe, in Ontario, is there anything in our master plan that jumps off the page that is different than other municipalities? That is either better or worse?
Better or worse?
I would take both as if there are. I'm hoping for better.
I mean, I think Oakville's in a pretty favorable position in some respect in the sense that you've been doing this planning for many decades now. It predates the work that we've, we've been assisting with several plans, but it predates that, and you have the benefit of having some tremendous, I mean, I think of the larger facilities that you have, whether it be Glen Abbey, Iroquois Ridge, even some of the newer ones, Oakville-Trefalgar Community Centre. These are tremendous facilities that really serve a wide range of individuals and needs. Many other older communities have, I mean, you still have a few of them when we talk about some of your outdoor pools or some of your single-pad arenas, but you have, you don't have as many of these products of their time within your inventory. So you're already operating at a very high level. They're in great locations, and I think that's why this plan talks, it's not, you know, it's about reinvesting as much as it is about the new and being able to serve, you know, residents through new facilities. So I think from the perspective of being a blended and realistic and manageable approach, we tried really hard to make sure that this plan has legs in that regard.
Okay, I thank you. And last comment is just on slide 18. I guess by that picture, I guess you're suggesting anybody that age will not be using the rec centers very often.
I'd have to go back to the exact slide, but we're all
It's slide 18.
We're all aware of our own mortality, perhaps. Is that what you're suggesting?
I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Chisholm?
Thank you, worship. Just a couple of questions and a couple of statements. On one slide, I'm sorry, I don't know what number is. I'm not like Councillor Elgar and has a number in his head when it comes to the slides. This partnership with the Halton District School Board or the Halton District Catholic School Board, what's the intent of that? You're calling it a partnership. What's that all about?
Thank you, councillor Chisholm. Through you, Mr. Mayor. The town's Recreation and Culture Department already has a tremendous agreement with local schools, and I'd say it's, it's one that many communities would love to be able to emulate across the province. So we continue to want to see that extended and expanded. When new schools are developed, when new fields are developed, we recognize that, you know, land is, land is finite in your community, and having, the public expects access to taxpayer-funded facilities, whether they're yours or provincial or otherwise. So, you know, I think the plan just speaks more broadly to those types of arrangements, and also reviewing arrangements that are longstanding. We use the example of White Oaks Pool being, being one of those, and as you develop the new 16-mile Aquatic Centre, it would be interesting to see, you know, how the older facility and the newer facility interplay, and there could be some, some opportunities or challenges there. So we want to make sure that you're investing in the facilities that meet those community needs.
Okay, so what we're, what we're really saying here is we're continuing on with our relationship with the school boards under the reciprocal agreement that we have with the schools. And so I assume that's where we're going to move forward when there's new facilities. And so, and usually what happens is, you're probably aware of it, is when we, schools are built, they seem to be built beside public parks, and the usage is a kind of reciprocal concept between the schools and the town, which I think is an excellent idea, and we do continue on with that. The one thing, just for clarification, Foglers property, could you, is that the property we acquired not too long ago on Lord Base Line?
That's correct, councillor. It's the old sport, social club.
All right, so that's, so that's on the, on the radar to look at what the functions we can use for that property in the future, which is good. So I just wanted clarity on that one. The challenge, I think, too, is, I don't know where we go with this one, is with respect to access to recreation programs. I've been hearing from my residents and so forth, the difficulty getting into programs, and they're on wait lists, and it continues on getting bigger and bigger. It might be a reference to the facilities, but I think what we, I think where a real issue is, is the lack of resources we have in human resources for instructors and so forth. And I think we're seeing that reflected right now in our aquatics programs with that. So we need to really look at how we acquire staffing and how we allocate times for our programs for the residents of Oakville, because right now it seems to be a holdup or a blockage of people getting into programs. So I think that's a real big issue that needs to be, I guess, looked at by the staff and also from the town in its entirety. The other thing, too, is looking at the hours of operation with, aside with programs and so forth. I'd like to see fee schedules be a little bit more creative with respect to our programming and our rentals and so forth. I think we're getting to a point whereby residents and also our clubs and so forth, they're finding it very extremely difficult to run their operations or their programs based on the fees associated to, for rentals and so forth. So something to look at and how we deal with that. The other, the other one I'd really like to look at is, and I didn't see that come up, and I do apologize if I missed in the report, special event strategy, where we've been looking at a special event park in Oakville. I hope that's on the radar. Has there been any discussions with the ministry with respect to Bronte Provincial Park and the town acquiring that or being a partnership in some operation in the future? Has there, has there anything been done on that one?
Thank you, councillor. I can't speak to the status of those. I would look to park staff perhaps, but I would indicate, recommend, or Action 72 to 74, do speak to events, and do highlight the opportunity that could or might be there with Bronte in particular, in addition to implementation of the sport, sorry, special event strategy and some other event parks.
Okay. This is, this is where I think a real challenge is happening with respect to people, as the mayor indicated earlier, about people coming outside the community, going to our parks and our events and so forth. I'll give you a prime example. Carnation Park is a nice little waterfront park, not a big park, but it's heavy, heavy usage, and it's not necessarily that the residents of Oakville, they're coming from everywhere, and, you know, that's, that's a good thing to happen, but there are a lot of implications with that happening. So I've heard residents complain about that, for parking and noise and so forth. So that's something we have to look at, how we deal with that, that intake with respect to people outside the municipality using our passive parks or waterfront parks. I don't think they're ever designed to be special event parks, and unfortunately, it's kind of morphed into that over the years. My last comment is with outdoor pools, and I want you to be very careful in this one. I've, I've lived this, trying to close one of the pools many years ago, and we had an uproar from the neighborhood and the community. I look at those outdoor pools as a service provided to the community. It's not necessary it's going to break even, or it's going to make us money, but it's a service that we provide. It's not necessary it's going to break even or it's going to make us money, but it's a service that we provide for the neighborhood residents and so forth. Those pools are important, but I think we need to take a serious look. You know, because we always talked about walkable communities, and we were really ahead of our time in those days, we called it walk two pools. So now we're considering a centralized location for a complex, and let's face it, gonna have to get in the car and drive there. So I would strongly look at, seriously look at reevaluating the outdoor pools. I know that they are seasonal, I know they cost money to get them going and so forth, but that's something that as a community service that we provide in recreation, it's not necessarily a business, but rather a service that we're providing. So I would be strongly in favor of maintaining those to such a degree. White Oaks Pool, and you're probably aware, White Oaks Pool was inherited by us, by the Halton District School Board. They left QEP and White Oaks on our laps many years ago, and we've taken over those two pools. And we've brought them up to our standards, and I think they're well received. I know there's some type of relationship and partnership with the Oakville Aquatic Club for White Oaks Pool. That's something that I think we need to, as you said in your reports, good partnerships with our organizations. Because we can't run everything on a direct programming basis, we need our community organizations to deliver those services. And we have to be a good partner, and we can't be a good partner if we're really putting it straight on the financial side of it. So I would look at all the pools, especially the outdoor and the White Oaks Pool, in the vein of attempting to revitalize those to the extent that we have a good community service. I think I've got everything at this point in time on my end, and I want to thank you very much for the presentation. Very thorough, I think you've covered everything that is, needs to be done within the next 25 years. And so I thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Chisholm. Councillor Adams?
Thank you very much. I have a small list of questions. Going to start back at Folgerwood Pool, since we're talking about outdoor pools. I note on page 136, there's a consideration of when it comes to end of life, let me get to page 136 here, that it would be considered for redeveloping it with a modestly sized neighborhood serving outdoor pool. How is that different from what we have now?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, probably not quite different. But what this would not be is sort of a newer, modern pool that has more bells and whistles and is able to accommodate additional users.
So we're not talking about a giant 25 meter pool with multiple lanes and stuff like that, we're talking about a moderate sized?
The details of that would have to be dealt with through the design process and community input at that time. What we're trying to advance here is, I mean, the average lifespan of a pool in Ontario, according to stats Canada, is 34 years. Each of your pools are over 50 years old right now, and they've really flatlined in terms of use. I know many of them are walkable, they're walkable if you're in Folgerwood, or if they're walkable if you're south of QEW. They're not walkable if you're anywhere else in town. So by sort of, and I'm challenged not to think of this as closure, but rather an opportunity to enhance and, you know, maintain a service and enhance the experience for current and new residents.
And that is how I read the document, is for a reestablishment of something that would be great for the local community. And so I know that that pool has gone through numerous renovations, patching, I'll call it, over the years. And I wondered, is there a estimate of how many more years we can get it to limp along before it gets to end of life? True end of life, because it's been at that point for a while?
I'll ask your Director of Recreation to speak to that.
Through you, Mayor Burton. As Steve said, they're all over 50 years old, so we don't have a precise condition on them. But we're experiencing more and more repairs, and as you said, it's patching them together and keeping them going at this point. So at some point, they're going to have to be, if we're keeping them all replaced as is, and the current estimate at a Class D is about $5 million times five, so that's.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that for me?
Replacing the change room and tank as is, like a brand new with an accessible ramp, no added features like the modernized concepts Steve's talking about, it's about $5 million.
Wow, those are big numbers. Okay. Thank you for that information.
No.
I just heard a wow online there, I think from Ray. The second question I have is about pickleball courts and sighting of them. And I see on page 150 or page 30 of the draft, I guess it is, there is contemplation under section 51c of appropriate setbacks for courts from adjacent houses. And I know that we've experienced a few issues with that. And is that intended to then come back as part of the racket ball, sorry, racket sports strategy? That kind of specific around sighting, location, and whether there should be, I don't know, consideration of buffers or different kinds of things?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, absolutely. This has become sort of the, you know, the topic du jour lately of sighting of these facilities. And but there's a lot of factors that do need to come into play. I know the British Columbia Parks and Rec Association did an acoustic study. That buffer varies dramatically based on the intervening lands, are there trees, are there berms, is it hard surface, is it grass? The number of courts, the more that you have, the more incessant the noise will be. There's also new technologies being introduced to the sport, so it's an evolving conversation. But, you know, you're looking at, you know, multiple tens and dozens of meters that would be ideal, in particular for a larger complex. So those are conversations that you want to have with your users and communities.
Yeah, so those details, that detailed level, and I don't imagine that that level of detail would be in this kind of plan. But the getting to those details, is that something we see then within the racket sports strategy? Is that where we'll be looking for that?
That's correct. So what we have available for your, for council and the public right now are two reports that you have as part of your package. They're called the Community Engagement Report, that speaks to what we've heard so far. And then a summary of the objectives and actions. What we're still working on, because we need the feedback from the community, is the support, supporting material. So there'll be a few extra hundred pages of material for you to review at some point that help to support the recommendations. And that just remains in draft right now. So we have plenty of those criteria in particular about how to go about dealing with site selection and direction that should be referred to the racket sports strategy.
Great, I'm glad to see that, and I support that direction. Similarly, in the world of basketball, there needs to be consideration about site locations of basketball courts. But I don't see the same kind of comment or the same kind of sighting requirement within the section about basketball, which is on a different page. In any case, it doesn't have any comment about where you should try to place a basketball court. Should a basketball court be placed in a village square park, should it be placed somewhere else? Should it be placed adjacent to a community center or a school, those kinds of things? Could we consider incorporating that?
Absolutely, if, I mean, I put back to you, if you have, have there been concerns raised in the community or vice versa, you're looking for more opportunities?
Well, I think we need more opportunities, but I think we need to be careful about where we place them. Because in our ward, we historically had a tennis court, which we converted to a basketball court, which caused all kinds of troubles within that community. We then moved that basketball court to a new court, which to my knowledge has been a happy ending for it, and converted the basketball court back to a racket sport. And so we went through this transition, trying to find a great location for basketball, because I think there was a need for basketball in the community. But we didn't land it in the right place, basically, is what I would say. And so we, I think, have learned from that experience, but we might want to consider writing that down. So in the future, remember that lesson and don't repeat it. So I'll leave that for consideration. And then you mentioned, and we started the questions around numbers of people and where they're going. And there was a comment from our staff about the direction around midtown not being included within this draft or this plan. But how will the direction to reduce the midtown numbers impact this plan, and how will we learn that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If, right now, we're working with the population forecasts that have been brought forward through the Joint Best Planning Estimates. If those numbers were to change, there would be potential implications throughout the plan, we'd have to assess those at that time. In terms of midtown in particular, the feedback that we received from the library board the other night was to have a look at that model. It was more about maybe assumptions that were made around the ability of existing or future libraries to serve that community. Being with the central library being really the closest location to that community. As it relates to recreational infrastructure, Oakville Trafalgar Community Centre is much closer to that community than Central Library would be. So it would be, you know, at this point, from our perspective, that's the community site that would help to serve a lot of the, you know, the indoor swimming, the municipal indoor swimming, municipal gymnasiums, you'd also have the potential for schools, other private amenities, other private providers within that community from a recreational perspective. And then the parkland piece is really, you know, that's something that is working its way through the secondary plan process.
Okay, and can I ask you then about the northeast and northwest area? So in, there's a tremendous amount of growth that's mentioned on page, what is this, page 22, at least of the slides, where you've got, and in our deck anyway, you've got, I think you've got the northeast and the northwest reversed in the table. But then I think it's correct in the map, where it shows the northeast being 20% of the growth and the northwest being 39% of the growth. I think the table is reversed. That's a huge amount of new population. And I know that Iroquois Ridge has been taking a lot of the extra volume of users during the growth period. And boy, are we going to be happy to see the new community center at 16 Mile up and running to take off some of the heat from us, I think. But given the huge amount of growth happening in the Trafalgar Corridor area, I'm really happy to see consideration of an additional community center space in Ward's, basically in Ward's, Ward's 7 is going to get two community centers. And maybe by then, there'll be a Ward 8, I don't know. But in any case, what, can you expand on that community center and what the catchment area would be for that area? The maps you've got are really, I think, helpful at showing the areas that are going to see the growth and then trying to overlap where the new centers are going to be. But what's the kind of spacing of community centers in terms of geographic catchment area? We talked about wanting to have a park playground kind of thing within 500 meters of people. What do we do with respect to community centers? You talked about the population required to support them.
Absolutely, through you, Mr. Mayor. The provision target that we use to help, you know, in these master plans, this is our starting point for these, is one major multi-use, you know, one multi-use community center for every 45,000 persons. So that helps us with, you know, if you've got 450,000 as you're going towards, we want to have about 10 different centers, if they're fully functioning, to be able to meet those needs. And then, so that gives us a starting point for how many we need, then we look for strategic locations to locate them and to distribute them. We've used, and I think you've been using this metric for several years, a two kilometer catchment area that would serve these. And, you know, I think that's going to be smaller for some centers that are a little bit smaller and, you know, might be a little bit larger for ones that are larger because of maybe the level of service that they offer. But the recommendation is to really provide sort of three new community centers across the top of the town, from one in the Palermo Village area to the west. And then two more in the northeast, might be Ward 6, might be Ward 7. The location, you need to find the land to meet those needs. One would probably be a little bit closer to Dundas to serve that emerging population along the Trafalgar Corridor. And then something a little bit closer, a little bit further to the north. Plus investment, and we see River Oaks Community Center as a great opportunity to serve that Uptown Core and Trafalgar Corridor growth a little bit south of Dundas Street as well.
Okay, I asked that question about the catchment area, because when I look at the map of the service locations or the new sites that are kind of, and I get it, the sites are not specifically chosen in most cases. But the Joshua's Meadow area, which is the far northeast area, which is one of the medium growth areas that contemplates having 21,000 people in it, doesn't have a specific center in it. And there's some geography issues that make it difficult, I think, to get from there to another location. But in terms of the existing community centers, you have to cross major arterials at the moment to get to anything. So it certainly doesn't feel like a community center within that space at the moment. And so I, it concerns me that that broad area won't have a location.
I would just, right now, we don't have locations for any of those. That would really be delivered through an opportunity analysis and additional discussion. So, you know, those connections and making, you know, we've heard a lot from, I mean, the library board as well, about ensuring that there's active transportation and public transit connections to all of these sites.
Right, so in any case, I think the plan correctly identifies the need for something. And when you add up the 21,000 for Joshua's Meadow and the Dundas Urban Core, and the nearly 18,000 for the Trafalgar Urban Core North, and the 50,000 that's within the Urban Core South and Midtown, you know, having 80, 90 or 100,000 people in that area really is going to demand something. Otherwise, Iroquois Ridge and the new 16 Mile Sports Complex are going to be completely overrun. And then on the issue of space and parkland, and there's discussion about the rugby club as well, I didn't see anything specifically about the Parkwaylands and how they may act to respond to that particular need as well as provide opportunities for community gardens or other things. Was that contemplated or considered?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. As part of the plan's implementation, that as well as a number of other properties that the town has recently acquired along the Lower Base Line or other parks that will be merging in North Oakville, will be considered for their ability to support the facilities that are recommended within the plan.
That didn't really answer the question about the Parkwaylands.
They're part of your future parkland opportunities. You know, they're currently, as I understand it, they're currently not in municipal ownership.
Correct.
But the town would look to, as they would with all other necessary lands, look to, you know, for ways to secure that moving forward.
Okay, so it's a consideration for, as an opportunity, very, very well. And then I'm going to come back one last time to community center issue and pools, and that is, what would have to happen, what would the community have to do in order to have a 50 meter pool instead of a 25 meter pool in the next community center that gets designed? What, the community, there's a swim community that wants a 50 meter pool. And I'm surprised that they weren't more forceful in their incorporation within the outreach that we did. But what would they have to do, what would they have to come to the table with in order for the town or the plan to say, yeah, we could support a 50 meter pool in these conditions or if this happened?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Where the Oakville Aquatic Club in particular, I think the group you're speaking to did suggest interest in that, in that being a 50 meter. interest in that, in that being a 50-metre pool. The recommendation right now is for a larger, up to a 10-lane, 25-metre pool within the future community centre in Trevogur Urban Core South. So this would be, this even would be extended beyond your typical level of service, being essentially a square pool. You can program it a number of different ways. And the reason for that recommendation is it's there to support community-level needs more from an instruction, lifelong participation perspective. In terms of meeting broader sport needs, that would be an item that would be referred to. One of the recommendations is to develop a sport tourism strategy that looks at infrastructure available locally and available regionally, and assesses those opportunities for, you know, for supporting higher-level sport beyond the community level.
So is there a facility population per 50-metre pool number?
There are 19 50-metre pools in Ontario, 18 that I think are currently operational. About half of those are managed by universities, about half by municipalities. Within the last few decades, the only pools that have been built municipally, there have been three to my knowledge since 2000. All of those have been built with the support of an international games bid.
Okay. So could we, could we help our community by making it clear what the conditions would be under which we would consider converting to a 50-metre pool? So I know, and we've, council, this council and previous councils have been through this wringer of 25-metre versus 50-metre pool, I can't remember how many times. And I don't think, it feels to me like we've never been super clear about what the conditions are, that we would have to have in order to get a 50-metre pool. And if the condition is, we can only do it with some special grant associated with some special event, then that would be really useful to know for our community. And so far, our community has been unable to fundraise enough to make it viable, so. All right, that's it. And that's lots. So thank you very much for your indulgence.
Thank you, councillor Adams. It's all very interesting. As I, as I do the back-of-the-envelope math, nine municipal pools in a province of 14 million, the standard's 1.5 million people per pool. We've got some growing to do to get there. Yeah, yeah. So, and don't forget, the other hang-up that we've always had on 50s is the temperature difference desired by the competitive folks. If they were willing to swim in warmer water, they'd be easier to accommodate. But anyway, thank you for all of that. Councillor Sheehan, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. Thank you for the presentation. I have a couple of questions for those recommendations, actions. The first one, on slide 22, so developing twin-pad arenas, so in North Oakville. So that's the population, if that means the population is close to 325,000, then we will have the North Oakville new arena.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Councillor, Mr. Mayor, sorry. Yes, that's correct. So right now, there's currently capacity within the municipal arena system to allow for one or one to two arenas to be potentially repurposed, hence the recommendation there. But with population growth, we anticipate, you know, additional demand will come back online in the future, although not until about 320, when you grow by about 100,000 to be able to support that next twin-pad project. Twin pads are more operationally efficient than single pads and are preferred by most user groups because of their convenience.
I see. So based on the population prediction, so I guess, so for the North Oakville, this new one, it will be northeast or west? I assume it's northeast.
We've, we've just indicated North Oakville being northeast or northwest. For that, the reason being arenas are a little bit more of a drive-to facility. I mean, we want consideration of distribution, certainly, but particularly if you're a hockey player, you're not always riding with your stick on your bike, so in the winter, so it might become a land or partnership-based driven project.
Okay. Thank you. Another question is on slide 43. So those summary of the recommendations for the off-leash dog park. So there's a, it's planned up to five new off-leash parks. So can I know there's some plan in different location for those new five?
Thank you, Mr. Councillor. The master plan, so what the master plan does, it identifies town-wide needs, then drills down to the, more the, sort of the plan area, those northeast, northwest, east, west, what-have-you areas. Site selection is still yet to be completed on those five leash-free dog areas, but we have identified one to two sites in West Oakville. That would be, if you think, sort of the Glen Abbey area. One site in southwest Oakville and one site in northeast Oakville, recognizing there are already two locations in the northwest.
Yeah, I agree. So for my suggestion for those dog parks, so, because there, it cannot, very hard to say as in which word, because sometime dog park on the border is, will be shared. For example, so in Ward 7, we have two now. So one is on Palmo. So Palmo is very few residents from, from Ward 7 is going to that to use that park. It's close by, it's Ward 4. So like, if we do something in northeast, so that definitely we can share is Ward 7 and Ward 6, even Ward 5. So some kind of this location. This is my suggestion for thinking about the location. And I think that my colleague, councillor Adams, also already touched about those community, community food garden, the veggie gardens. So because based on the report on page 77, so those facility priorities, so we got top three is park washroom, park land second, the playground is third, but you can notice that the community food garden is on the first, and it's 71% in mind, request for that. So what I'm thinking about with this recommendation, there's no consider about community food garden on this slide, several summaries. So this is some same question for Tom Adams as well.
Thank you, councillor, through you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize, we did run out of space on certain slides to maybe get into a few of those details. We'd hopefully have those embedded within the plan. If you refer to the draft objectives and actions document, recommendation, action number 70 does speak to expansion of community garden sites. Driven on a policy basis, though, in the sense of trying to establish, kind of as we've talked about today, sort of conditions for success or criteria for establishment of future community gardens. We're very supportive of them in the right locations.
I see. Because I always, I locate for the dog park and community garden, since my campaign. So this is something I'm always looking for. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Sheehan. Next, we have councillor Giddings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, lots of questions for you this evening. One of the charts showed the number of, the percentage of people that were in favour of a specific sport type and a number that were opposed. Is that, is that common for you to see that in communities? Is it? And is it because they don't understand the sport, or they don't participate themselves, or they don't have any children? The percentages surprise me.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that's very common. We tend to see, I mean, we tend to see strong support for really everything within the system. I mean, there's a reason why you're offering it in the first place. But just speaking of outdoor off-leash dog parks, that's a really good example where you're probably going to be split about 50-50, because you either have a pet or you don't. Doesn't, you know, you might have a dog, you may not use an off-leash dog park, but that tends to be a bit of a polarizing example there. So it's pretty common, and, you know, it's something that we do consider, though, is just the total number of people that can be served with the taxpayer dollars that you do have.
Thank you. Speaking of dog parks, the plan calls for a service area or a walk-to area of two kilometres, a two-kilometre radius. Any municipalities out there using it based on a projected canine population?
I know, you know, it becomes more of a consideration in high-density areas.
Exactly.
And, you know, we've definitely aware of the estimates out of the City of Toronto, where they say there's seven dogs per every condo floor. And, you know, it becomes a joint obligation of not just the municipality, but in particular the developer and the community to make those relief areas available for their pets. So the recommendation does speak to, we have one specific to that, number 69, about developing a leash-free dog area policy to address the dynamics of those situations where you have a more limited land base, but other interests at play.
So seven per floor. So we could have thousands of dogs in some of the areas. And based on behaviours that we see on an ongoing basis, any open spaces is a le, is possible for a leash-free park, whether it's a walking trail or a cemetery or anything else. So is that something that we could dig into a little further for some of the growth areas that are going to be coming, and whether it could be based on projected canine population?
Be happy to take that feedback, and I think it fits in principle with the recommendation that we already have in the plan around developing an approach for those high-density areas.
All right. And seeing as we're on high-density areas, you talked about on page 25, new models for community space, and you mentioned POPs and Strata-type of arrangements. Do you believe that the condos in the various growth areas should be providing community centre-type facilities, whether that be racket sports, swimming? Because not all of the new areas are going to be able to have a community centre nearby.
And that's, so through you, Mr. Mayor, I think that it's part of a bigger conversation around financing and supporting these larger developments. And, you know, the community, the municipality has certain rules that, you know, are available from development charge, community benefit charge perspective. You have the land base that's required. So, you know, I think what I can say is, we're seeing, as the amount of public space, outdoor public space is decreasing, the opportunity and need for other forms of public space increases, whether that be inside or shared spaces. And we're starting to see, I'll use Toronto again as an example, but you're seeing, you know, those community centres within podiums of condos. They take up the first and second floor. You know, and that becomes, you know, whether that, it's in your case, a library, a community centre, another type of space, they, many of them will offer condominium-style fitness centres. Those are, those are private and meant for the, for the local residents. They're not programmable spaces. There's a big difference between that and your own municipal fitness centres, for example. So.
And you mentioned that those were, were those public or private?
They do tend to be private. You know, with a critical mass of development, though you do see more private interests that, or even not-for-profit interests that, you know, services might become a little bit more viable. So, you know, we use the example of private sector fitness clubs. You'd already have some of those within many of your areas. You'll see probably more of them that become an alternative. And that's where I think, you know, partnerships become a little bit more viable, or at least interesting in the sense that, you know, what can the municipality do to ensure access to, and inclusive and affordable access to services for individuals, whether you have the property or you have the service delivery responsibility?
Many of my council colleagues have talked about wait times and being wait-listed and not being able to get into various programs. We experienced that at the Oakville-Trevogur Community Centre. And so I'm just trying to see how, I don't believe that in areas such as Midtown, or as councillor Adams was talking about in their area, we'll be able to fulfil that need with the tens of thousands of people that'll be moving into the area. Unstructured outdoor recreation, can we call that a field? Is that?
You can call it a field, you can call it a plaza, you can call it, you know, even a pavilion or something with a covered roof and shade can offer many opportunities during all forms of weather and times of year.
Thank you. And what landmines should be, should we be watching out here, watching out for? You've done this a lot of times, and we're going through unprecedented growth as a lot of GTA communities are. Are there some things that you'd recommend we watch out for?
I mean, big question, certainly. You know, I think by the way that we've developed this plan in terms of trying to tie key capital recommendations to population is wise. It's one that we haven't done a lot of before, but just because of the fluid nature of the growth in this province and your community and how you're trying to build these communities, I think is an important one. We reflect on the experience at 16 Mile and, you know, that we've had, we've worked through past plans where, you know, tried to bring that on sooner, but the realities of municipal finance in certain cases, just, you know, it becomes a reality. And then you have residents that come to have those expectations. So I think just trying to plant the flag around sequencing and timing of major capital and, you know, recognizing that, I said it before, the municipality doesn't need to be everything to everyone. You have a tremendous, whether it be sport community, recreation, leisure, library community that are very passionate about the work that they do. So, you know, continuing to review your agreements and establish agreements with a transparent lens and framework so that those can be entered into openly and to the benefit of taxpayers will serve you well.
I appreciate that. And when you come before us again, if you could let us know what the new pickleball is going to be, because I don't think any of us realize the excitement and the stress that that could be put on us. So that would be greatly appreciated. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Giddings. Councillor Lishchina.
Hi, Steve. Thanks so much for the presentation. As a non-skater, I have a skating question. Just going through your presentation, you know, words like converting arenas and, you know, covered refrigerated rinks. So could you comment on synthetic ice rinks? I mean, I don't think they need electricity and not weather-dependent. I'm sure there's other issues with them. And as I said, non-skater, the only issue I see there is that there aren't any boards that I could stop if I'm skating. But, but otherwise, could you make a comment on that?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I can try. I don't know a lot about synthetic rinks, what I do know about them. I mean, certainly, like anything, the technology is always changing. So I have not seen many of them delivered by municipalities in Ontario.
But could that be something that councillor Giddings just said, potentially the next different type of pickleball?
It could be. I think what, you know, what we heard from the public is, and this fits with the newcomer population, too. Not everyone wants to play hockey, but they want to learn how to skate. It's, it's part of being Canadian, and it's one of the great opportunities that you can, activities you can do in the winter, right? So trying to expand those in the face of a changing climate is something that a lot of communities are challenged with. Synthetic ice is essentially, I'll just probably get this. Synthetic ice is essentially, I'll just probably get this wrong, but it's, you know, it's essentially plastic, can be very warm in the summer. You know, you have to be very mindful of.
I'm not sure if it could be covered up and could be a different, just because of the outdoor rinks, we really had poor weather this year to really have them as viable areas for recreation. So if that could be something to be considered, that'd be great. Thanks.
I believe we do have mention to it in the recommendation because, you know, I think we need to be a bit more creative with how those are delivered.
Thank you, councillor Lishchyna. Next, councillor Hazletale.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Burton. Thank you very much to the staff for an amazing report and all the homework and detail that went into it. So a few of my questions are around, there's recommendations, but then there is, and there's a lot that are listed as high priority. Very few made it to medium or even low. So in terms of the next steps in defining those priorities, the sequencing and the phasing, will we see that when you come back in September? Will that be a lower-level kind of now, a deeper dive around capital forecasting? Here's what we recommend for, based on fair geographic distribution, as well as all of these other recommendations? Like, how will we get to that prioritization?
Thank you, councillor. Through you, Mr. Mayor. The plan itself, you're right, it's very difficult for us to come up with low priorities and still recommend them. So that is always a challenge of these exercises. Timing and priority tend to sort of flow well together. So administration and staff will be coming back on an annual basis, typically through the budget process, and looking at those key recommendations that they can advance within the coming year or embed within the long-term capital forecast. Anything that's capital-related needs to, you know, you need to have a funding source tied to it. So that, in essence, will sort of dictate a little bit of sequencing as it goes with the plan. I think staff will also work hard to make sure that a lot of the strategies and, you know, additional study that's required, we've spoken to a little bit already around aquatics, racket sports, sports fields, that those studies are initiated in the near term. Because that will, I think a lot of the detail around those three key areas will emerge from those more detailed planning studies, as well as there's an additional study around revitalisation of existing facilities. So sadly, with something of the scope this broad with the master plan, it's very hard to deliver on an itemized list, one through 100. The plan does try to give you conditions for that success and criteria for helping to prioritize those, but still give you the flexibility that you need to be able to integrate land-based opportunities, partnership-based opportunities as they emerge.
So I appreciate that. Is there a timeline that you recommend in terms of a trigger that if you're saying it's 375 and these things would be, should be services or amenities that we increase at 375 or whatever the number is? Is there, like, is it a three-year window where you say, listen, you're going to need this when you hit this population? Or are we being reactive to that population?
I mean, ideally, the goal with master plans is to be as proactive as you can and be able to plan for it. I think that's, so if you're approaching a number, you know well in advance that you're approaching it and you're starting to take those steps. It's going to take you at least five years to build a major facility, right? You need to secure the land. It could take longer. It often does. The more complex the site, the more complex the arrangement, it takes longer. You need to get the land, you need to do the design, you need to do your cost and get your funding. You've been through this. All right, so.
I have been through this.
It does take time. And, you know, I think it underscores the need for all of your departments to continue to work together around this, you know, planning with recreation and parks, for example.
Okay. So it really also speaks to a really robust discussion around capital forecasting being tied to it. Okay, thanks. Just further to councillor Giddings' comments about support for Midtown, whether it's, and support for the North East, with our current community centres are hitting some capacity numbers. Like, when I looked at the survey, first I was a bit shocked to see that on one of the lines that said, you know, needs to be revitalised or expanded. And then I realized, okay, what they're saying on Oakville-Trefalgar Community Centre is, most likely they're looking for an expansion because they're claiming it is too busy and too crowded. And so I imagine the same probably is happening up in Iroquois Ridge. So knowing that that is the perception and knowing we are at capacity in certain programs, where does the 45,000 population number come from? What is the basis for that?
It's, we call it a planning target, not a standard. There are no accepted provincial-wide or beyond standards for level of provision. So they're really built based off of a number of factors, including your current level of service and the feedback that you're getting. You know, if you deliver one of something per X number of people and are you still getting hearing demand for more? That's an indicator that it's something we need to adjust. We also look at the availability of, the provision of those facilities in other communities. So we peek over the fence, what are they doing in Mississauga? What are they doing in Brampton and in Burlington? And you sort of compare. And there might be, it's very hard with community centres to compare one to the other. There are apples to oranges in many cases. So we need to account for that. We look at wait lists, we look at usage and where the demand can be improved there. Part of the reason why with Glen Abbey Community Centre, that pool, we'd really like to, damn, it's the only one in that area. And you have 16 Mile coming on, which is great. And will have a big impact. But if that pool could be made larger and then, you know, you have that service life for the next 40, 50 years. So there's a lot of factors that go into it. And we have to be mindful of our ability to even deliver on those needs. So what we've put forward, we feel, is something that's achievable, that finds the right balance with community needs.
Okay. Thank you for that. In terms of, when you go back out to the public to get feedback, first, I should say, my compliments on whoever did the graphics and the social media piece and the images to get people to respond to the survey has obviously worked. And you got people's attention. But when you go back out, is there any messaging around all of what you've been hearing tonight, which is, when would we do that? How much could that cost? Putting some, managing a little bit of expectation? Is any of that in what goes out? Because there, you look at the list and, yes, we need a dog park, we need it tomorrow. Yes, I need community gardens, I need it. So is there, has there been thought to framing it? So we make sure that we're clear that we welcome and need them to add any additional comments? Have we got it right? Where do we need to adjust? But framing a bit of the planning that has to continue before we can get to.
I'd be happy to take that back to our committee. We're hoping to launch within about a week, some additional consultation on that. You know, I think the long-term nature of this plan is a challenge for, will be a challenge for a lot of people. So I think part of the input we'll be looking for is more on those projects that are in the nearer term, perhaps.
Okay. Can I ask that we make sure that we connect with the residents' associations? I know they weren't on the original stakeholders list, but they've always added great value. In fact, they helped us get two community centres built. So I think we should ask them for some perspective. On the public library piece, I just wanted to understand, is there a population number in terms of where we determine a branch? Or is there something that's a metric for it?
Absolutely. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Libraries traditionally are planned through master plans using space targets. So in the case of the Oakville Public Library in this plan, we're looking at 0.5, so half a square foot per capita. That is very close to your current level of provision. So for every two people, there'd be one square foot. With the growth that's anticipated, this plan looks to deliver on about 100,000 square feet of additional space by 2051. And that's been generally divided out through the capital projects that have been outlined here with some flexibility. Obviously, as you go through design, those, you know, the targets might change. You know, if we wanted it to be 15,000 square feet, maybe that gets, you know, that gets refined through detailed planning and architectural design.
That was very helpful to me. So then, in terms of distance between libraries? Because there was a time when a certain community wanted a library, but they were too close to the central library. So is there a distance factor as well?
Yes, thank you for reminding me of that. We use 1.5 to 2 kilometres. With, you know, there's always, there's never a perfect distribution of anything, but the library model has also had the opportunity to use alternate delivery models such as your OPL Express system, either in high-traffic areas or in some strategic spots that might help bridge some of those distributional gaps.
Well, I liked a lot of what was written in terms of the library's plan. I can't help but call out, our ClearView branch continues to be, its score's low. It has, efforts have been made to try and increase some operating hours, but it isn't servicing the community. And when you talk about crossing major arterials and being isolated, it's always been the neighbourhood that's isolated in town. There is a bit of a worry that in the north-west corner, you might end up with that major arterial as well. But I guess my call-out is, would it be part of a revitalisation strategy? If it was to be, we're not going to build a new ClearView library, I'm pretty sure about that. But would it be recommended that it be part of the revitalisation?
One of the comments that we received from the library board on Thursday night was to do essentially a review of ClearView, pointing out some of its, despite the efforts to boost usage in that neighbourhood, pointing out some of those shortcomings. So that is, that's an area I think we want to give some further consideration to.
Okay, thank you. You also mentioned a lot about partnership. And so I love that idea. I mean, I consider what we do with the BIA really partnership in terms of activities, et cetera. But I'm curious about the funding strategies around that. So is there going to be a deeper conversation about what we would look for in terms of partnership to build something in which a, I'll call it a more, an athletic facility would use? It's not necessarily the swimming pool. But there are organisations that have, you know, popped their head up every once in a while and say, well, I'd like to, I'd like to have this in our town. They don't necessarily, we don't have a toolkit, if you will, to say, well, you would need X amount of funding. So will there be any deeper information we get when you come back with the final report?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. The town and through past master plans has included a partnership evaluation framework, for example, that requires, at least for any unsolicited proposals, to be supported by a business plan to the satisfaction of the town that considers a number of different aspects, whether it be financial performance, long-term viability, demonstration of need and the capacity of the partner to deliver on that. So there are a number of different evaluation tools that are available and should be. We do have a recommendation around continuing to, you know, follow a process when it comes to that. It's always hard, similar to our conversation earlier, to compare different proposals to another. But you'd like, at the end of the day, to have the taxpayer interest protected and having, you know, by able to follow some key criteria, at least gets you out of the gate in that regard.
Okay. Last, just a couple of comments. In terms of adjusting how we measure parkland and the comment that was about how we measure active parkland, can I just get some clarity and, maybe Chris can answer this for me? Are we talking about then counting things like 16 Mile in our active parkland? Because one of my worries is that, and I get this concern raised to me quite a bit. It's a beautiful space and people are on the water and enjoying it. But it also could have an environmental impact, depending on if we classify it as active parkland and people are clamouring up and down hills that we don't necessarily want them to. And the same thing goes up in the natural heritage area. So is there going to be some qualifier to that?
Through you, Mayor Burton. So the 2.2 and the conversation that we started through the master plan process is, the use of parks has changed dramatically since the pandemic. People are now more outside, using our parks. They've always used our trails, but they're using our passive parks now just as much as people are using our active sports fields. So to take a measure such as 2.2 for just containing it to active parkland, we feel, isn't really capturing the full amenity value, if you want to call it, of the parkland system that we're creating. So what we were suggesting we should look into is, you know, all of the trail corridors that go up and down creek valleys. Walkways, we're putting in walkways around storm ponds that have benches, they have garbage cans. They literally are active thoroughfares with pedestrian routes. But in the active parkland criteria today, they would not be classified as active parkland. So again, as the municipality gains more population, these areas are going to be more actively used and are currently being actively used. So that's why we think it's more, it's important to start looking at these areas as actively used because frankly, they are. And it's been proven out currently since the pandemic and continues strongly today.
That was a great clarification. Thank you very much. And those are all my questions and comments. Thank you.
Councillor Hazletale, thank you very much. Councillor Nanda?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Burton. Thank you so much for the presentation. I think I'll start off with, one of the questions that councillor Hazletale just asked was where we get the population of 45,000? The reason I ask that is you gave us that the catchment area is about two kilometres. So where 16 Mile is situated, and just based on what councillor Adams said as well, with North Joshua Creek not having anything planned and seeing that we should be getting one in the Trefalgar core, my question, and I don't know if this is for planning too, when are we looking to acquire land and what is the timeframe to build it? I know it says the library is phase one and the community centre is phase two. But I think based on what we're seeing, I already see up to where Ward 7 goes, which is east of Trefalgar, we already get complaints from residents there that 16 Mile is just too far away. And with Iroquois being overcrowded, even River Oaks, a lot of the community centres in the south, a lot of residents in the north still have to go there. It seems to me, based on how fast development is happening, that we actually urgently need a community centre there. I've said this in the past as well with 16 Mile. It feels that it skipped a generation in the last 10 years. And I know this is growing pains, but many, many children have become adults in the last 10 years in North Oakville, waiting for this community centre to come in. I think we honestly could have used it six, seven years ago. So I wonder if the population number is something that we need to look at versus the needs of the community? And especially now that the communities are getting built much more faster. And I think one of the things that we lack is facilities versus the development that's happening.
I'll start that off. Thank you, councillor. Through you, Mr. Mayor. The, you know, certainly it is a growing area. I can just. The, you know, certainly it is a growing area. I can just, I'll point out, within your long-term capital forecast, there is a placeholder there for purchasing land for that facility in 2025, 26. So currently, there's no identified site in municipal ownership, so that becomes very important. And I think that's kind of a theme within this plan is planting that flag and working towards those sorts of projects. There's growth happening across the community. And, you know, we're supportive of two facilities actually sort of up in more of the northeast. So part of it will be a matter of just when those projects can be pulled together, but also respecting other projects that have also, I'll say, been in the queue is because they're also dealing with projected growth such as Palermo Village, for example. So, you know, and leveraging the sites that we have, but we're trying, you know, with Glen Abbey and near Arequa, sorry, River Oaks expansions, those are probably longer term. It's a matter of trying to leverage the resources that you do have to get that into the queue.
Okay, thank you for that. So then, in the Joshua Creek North area, was it an oversight that a community center wasn't put within that community? Because even with this one coming, it still wouldn't be able to service that community. So is that community expected to just be a part of Arequa?
Sorry, I just want to go to my map here. Bear with me.
It would be east of Eighth Line and west of Ninth Line.
So the, happy if we could, is there a way to pull up the slide deck for a second? Thank you. I just want to clarify. The arrows eight and four in particular are probably looking at four. That would be sort of the major multi-use facility there. There's no location for that. So, you know, it's sort of shown as this nebulous sort of, you know, locationless amenity. We would like that, you know, to be able to service the growth that's anticipated for the Trafalgar Core, sort of shown in pink is that strategic growth areas, but the exact location of that would still be to be determined. And, you know, potentially even number eight, that could be, that could be, I mean, four and eight are, you know, an opportunity to move them around in the right location. So I think there's just more work that needs to be done to be able to look at the possibilities within that vicinity.
But is there also an opportunity to look at the population number again versus the community needs of having a facility?
Yes, we can add that to our review.
Okay, perfect. And then in terms of, at Glen Abbey, there was talk about making new change rooms. There's been discussion about change rooms in the facilities and them being unisex versus having individual or separated change rooms. And so we've had quite a few residents who have said that they would like to have separated change rooms. Is there a design for the ones that are going to be revitalized or renovated?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There's no design, no detailed design on those just yet. We've done preliminary work just to see around fit. But that would be a level of detail that would have to be discussed with the community at the time and with the benefit of an architect at that point in time. I know universal change rooms have become sort of more commonplace and you have them in some of your newer facilities. You know, there's different experiences for different users for those. So it's an item that, you know, continues to be a discussion that, you know, it's just a matter of finding the right fit for your community.
Okay. And then I also saw that we're going to get two additional cricket fields. We're looking at them as high priority, one in the short term, one in the medium term. Is there any land acquisition? It said West Oakville Sports Park. Are we looking at a particular area? What area is that exactly? And when are we looking at, I guess, within the next 10 years? Is that being built as well?
Yes. And to clarify, because it's not yet completed, the first of those two would be the planned cricket field at the 16 Mile Sports Complex site. So that would be really the town's second cricket field after Glen Ashton Park and first more fulsomely designed facility. West Oakville Sports Park is one of the major community parks being planned for north in your ward and the northwest area. So it has opportunity for multiple sports fields, including possibly cricket.
Okay, perfect. And then just one question about the tennis courts. There was a comment there, and I've received several comments about the tennis courts, about the asphalt versus having the coated blue-green services, a surface, sorry. Is there a reason why it's one way versus the other? Is there a cost associated with it? Or how those are designed?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, there is a cost. I think one of our recommended, and we did hear from the community about the state of current courts, asphalt, you know, the, I'll just cut to the recommendation, which is really about reviewing those standards and what's a municipal responsibility versus something that, you know, maybe a club or others would take on, because that was certainly something that we heard a lot about through the community.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Councilor Nanda, thank you very much. Councilor McNeese?
Thank you through your worship and thanks to staff and Steve for a very in-depth report and great presentation as well. Maybe I'll just start off with the Bronte Pool. I saw a lot of good objectives around sort of maximizing the use of space and partnering with schools and things like that. And I think the Bronte Pool is a great example of a strategic location to sort of co-locate or triangulate. You've got a school sort of on one side of it, a trail on the other side, a sports facility just south of it. The school specifically is, you know, under, obviously underutilized in the summer months and evenings and things like that. So Bronte Pool is one of those small, older pools that would be a great fit for more of a destination pool. And there's a little bit of space there. But I think it'd be good to just kind of look at the whole what's around it and how's it all going to work together in the future, because we're building condos like we're supposed to to meet our growth targets, but it means we're welcoming 2,000 new friends in the next couple of years, and they all have sports needs as well. So that's my ask around Bronte Pool, like the idea of the new style of pools that are, you know, more sloped and sand features and things like that. And I've mentioned before an example of a natural pool that's in Edmonton that's chlorine-free and some stuff like that. So whatever features make sense, I think that's a great idea. But it did resonate with me, Councilor Chisholm's remark that, I mean, maybe the destination pool doesn't need to be so big that it's servicing, you know, south of the QEW or so, because then we sort of create another problem. Now we've got to figure out how to deal with, you know, a whole bunch of cars. So maybe it's if we're consolidating, maybe it's not three to one, but, you know, three to two or something like that, just to try to keep the walkability and the, you know, keep the scale somewhat appropriate to the area. So that's my suggestions there. A question on sort of public squares. I know there's a question around pops and stratas, but how do sort of public squares fit into the parks planning here? Because I think they serve, you know, we've got one in Bronte. Downtown has one, I believe, in the north, you know, some new developments start putting in public squares that, you know, are more of a hard-surface recreational park-type place.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I would probably have to refer to the exact answer on public squares to your Parks Plan 2031. It does undertake a pretty detailed review of the typology and the function and the future sizes of those spaces. Where our plan sort of picks up is underscoring the importance of animating those spaces. And it can be very challenging. I'm aware of the one in Bronte Village. You know, that it's, maybe hasn't quite met its final and future use just yet. But those types of spaces will become, you know, whether we, whether we agree with them or not, will become a little bit more available within those higher-density areas. So I think working with your events team and your cultural team in particular to, and some key designers to make sure that they're suitable for their intended use will go a long way.
Okay. And I'd love to sort of see a bit of the theme of placemaking as far as how we activate some of those spaces or even small, you know, pocket parks to bring, you know, I think through the pandemic, we've realized people want, you know, some activities in some of our parks as well. So thanks for that. Now, related to parks in our older neighborhoods, so mostly south of the QEW, I saw some, I think it was reinvestment or renewal of them. I have a couple of points there. I mean, one thing we've noticed in our area, and, you know, I grew up in an area that was like that, the demographics have changed a lot, yet those parks are, you know, pretty much the same. We're renewing some of the playground equipment, but the fields are pretty much the fields I played on when I was a kid. But in talking to neighbors, you know, they're asking for amenities for seniors, whether it's, you know, outdoor fitness equipment, things like that. So through our campus of parks idea, I guess, how soon would we see some of those parks get reinvested in?
The plan does recommend, so, you know, I'm cognizant, we've recommended a lot of strategies, but these are very, you know, local types of conversations that do need to be had. We did reflect on the success of the Campus of Parks initiative and really want to see that rolled out into other areas in need. So recommendation action number 82 does speak to the need to prepare a park revitalization strategy that does build on that initiative and establishes some key decision-making criteria to look at what those investments, you know, highest and best use of the limited funds that you may have to bring, you know, bring some of those benefits across the town.
So part of that would be looking at changing demographics and how, you know, the neighborhood is different than when it was originally planned out and built.
And that's, I mean, that is the life story of a neighborhood park. It gets well-used for a number of years and then it falls into slow misuse. And you look to those opportunities to breathe new life into them.
Okay. And then just still along the line of sort of these older neighborhood parks that are quite large, and I'm just going to talk about an experience that Councilor Mayor and I had last week at one of these parks. So south of the QEW mostly, we've got stormwater issues coming up more and more. You know, and I guess fortunately or unfortunately, parks tends to be, you know, a prime place to store stormwater, whether it's underground or subsurface or on surface through some, you know, what we could say are enhancements to the park, but essentially stormwater management ponds. So Councilor Mayor and I, you know, had a public meeting in the park, mapped it out with the community to see what they thought about some of these enhancements to the park, you know, stormwater management pond. I think it was about 95% against it. So I think that's something that's going to come up again and again. So I think we got to think about, you know, our stormwater management needs. Where is it going to be stored? It looks like in this case, we're going to have to look at subsurface tanks, you know. So how's that going to, you know, be accommodated in these parks? I understand you can put, you know, sports fields or courts or stuff on top of it, but it's certainly, you know, with our experience, it's going to be a tough sell trying to bring a stormwater management pond into an existing park. I think if it's already in the existing, or if it's already built when people come, it's, I know there's comments about, yeah, add features around it, things like that. But in the existing parks, at least in the neighborhood in our ward, they were not for it. So I just want to, I think we need to figure out how to address that in there, because I know the stormwater management issue is just getting started and we're going to face a lot more of it. Related to the Bronte or QE Park Cultural Center Library idea, I would want to take a look at possible locations in the ward, because I think at QE PCC, that's right in a neighborhood. It's not really in a population center. And in Bronte Village, we don't have any kind of civic institution. So if a group wants to meet or, you know, run some programs or things like that, I mean, it's not where the people are. And a lot of people don't even realize that QE PCC is even in the ward. So and I understand the conversation was had at the library board as well. So I'd be for taking a look at possible locations, you know, within Bronte Village itself for that future location. And then related to community gardens, so I know there's two types of gardens. There's sort of an allotment-based garden that's individuals acting on their own, renting out a plot of land. And then there's a community garden, which typically has a programming element to it. I believe in Oakville, we just do the allotment gardens, but Burlington runs a community garden program where they, you know, get to meet each other. There's a lot of social aspects to it. Which, do you know which type we're referring to? Or is it both in the plan?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, the recommendation is really to develop a policy around the location of future sites. So you have the ability to really extend that policy to both types of parks, and we would be, the plan will be supportive of that. You know, as we get more dense development, I think you really need, you know, more of both to help support the community.
Okay, yeah. Maybe if we just call out that there's two types in there, because one does take, you know, in Burlington's case, I believe they have a full-time staff person that arranges the program that goes along with it, but it's great for social connection and mental health and things, you know, meeting your neighbor type stuff. A question about the outdoor pools, do they, in your experience, do they ever double as outdoor skating in the winter months? Sort of these destination pools, these newer-style pools?
I can't say I've seen a design that does that. I've seen some splash pads that have, some have and some have tried to replicate that. But they can be challenging to, you know, to design a feature like that to support four-season use, given the different climatic factors involved.
Okay. And related to outdoor skating, sort of these, I think you call them like unstructured surfaces where it's not sort of hockey matches and things like that, but just recreational skating. For a while, Bronte was trying to get one going along the waterfront. I understand there's climate concerns and things like that, but I'd love to see, I don't think I saw any mention of it in the reports, but I think there's a number of reasons to do with, you know, trying to provide some attraction to mostly the Bronte Village area in the winter months. You know, we're very busy in kind of spring, summer, early fall, but then just kind of dies right down in the winter. And we've got a number of small businesses to support as well. And I see many cities doing winter city strategies that typically looks at, you know, how do we use our parks and outdoor spaces more in the winter months? You know, just embracing the winter and bringing out new types of activities and features. We've done a bit with winterizing our washrooms and plowing some of our surfaces pass that get more people walking. But is there more thought about, you know, different uses for some of our parks? I'm thinking more down on the waterfront to get more winter use out of them?
Yes. And we heard from your residents, you know, they love the waterfront parks. Certainly, they flock to them. We've heard some of those comments today. So it really becomes, I think, when we talk about the park revitalization too, prioritizing waterfront parks would be a key aspect to that.
Okay. So maybe I could just add to it for four-season usage, because I think it would shift a lot, you know, in the winter as to how we would use it and keep people active. So. But I believe that's it for me. But thanks very much.
Councilor McNeese, thank you very much. Councilor Graham?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Councilor McNeese caught most of my questions about revitalizing older parks. We have a different situation where a lot of our older homes are turning over to young families. And so looking at revitalization of parks was a great idea, but then reading that you're going to be focusing mostly on close-to-waterfront or growth areas was a bit of a concern, because we have parks in College Park and River Oaks that are decades out of date. we have parks in College Park and River Oaks that are decades out of date, and I'm sure everybody can look at their own ward and say, yeah, this this is an older park. Is there any reason why you decided to choose those two areas as a focus?
Sorry, just to clarify, I was speaking to action number 82. So it does read, prepare a parks revitalization strategy to establish decision-making framework and priorities. Key park sites requiring reinvestment with an emphasis on waterfront parks and barrier-free accessibility. So those were barrier-free accessibility was also another aspect that we would prioritize.
That's perfect, yeah, but it's necessary, especially in some of our communities that we've got close to schools. I just, I'm hoping that if you can go back and look at, there's a College Park Parks Plan, which actually envisioned a campus of parks. I think we started in 2019. It was supposed to go through rather quickly, but unfortunately COVID happened. But if you can take a look at that, it actually envisioned the whole idea of creating a campus of parks in one area before it was mentioned in this report. So as I said, Councilor McNeese captured most of my other questions, so I'm just going to jump to reading in the draft objectives and actions. I note that you want to get more use from sports fields, and and this jumped out, that you want to revisit lighting restrictions on schools south of Dundas. I think some of the councillors who've been on for as long as I have will remember the fights that we've had trying to put up lighting standards around schools, and whatever deity you believe in be on your side as you go out and suggest this to people. But is there is there some new form of lighting that will not cause light pollution to every single human being surrounding the school, or what is the plan in this?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, there the technology on light spillage and and light pollution and and the quality of lights as we've shifted to LED is quite different than when that restriction was put into place about 20 years ago. We do reflect on the fact that you have, I'll use example of artificial turf fields, because you do have several of those that are south of of Dundas Street. You know, any field, whether it be grass or natural turf, can really accommodate 50 to 300% more use if it has lights, especially if it has artificial turf. And if we're, as we're doubling in population, it may not mean a doubling of the need for for sports fields, but, you know, creating the the conditions necessary to support those lands and those fields. Most communities are striving to get as much juice out of their 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 parks and their partnered sites as they can. We also look at the changing expectations and communities that that you have within your within your community, being that, you know, people are going to be coming into your condos with a different expectation, you know, they're coming into a vibrant urban setting. And part of that vibrant urban setting is being able to participate, you know, when it gets dark at eight o'clock at night, and and being able to do so without having to get on a bus that brings them up to North Oakville, where you have the land. So there's many communities that have adopted these within their their park system, but the recommendation is to really unpack even the even the science and and the technology around that through the sports field strategy.
Well, as you take this plan forward to the public, I do hope that you focus on many of the homes surrounding these schools when you seek advice about this issue, because it it will get nasty. Thank you. That's it for me.
Councilor Grant, thank you very much. Councilor Hazletill?
I will try to be quick. Two things that I missed. One is, where does air cadets and sort of their kind of needs fit into this? I mean, we, the Crusaders did a great job of lobbying, et cetera, but the air cadets are a large group, always needing space. Would they fall under culture, recreation?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if we've heard specifically on the needs from that particular group, but in terms of of having active spaces, I'll say gymnasiums, they are very much multi-use space, any community centers, you know, that that becomes a vital aspect, and trying to add gyms at at River Oaks, at Sir John Coburn, and new facilities that can accommodate a range of activities as well as program and meeting room spaces.
Okay, so we just need to find a gym where where they're marching, there aren't problems with how it affects the gymnasium floor, but I do know they're desperate for space and they have a huge population of young people. My last comments are around the OPL's newcomer strategy, and I just, in terms of the demographic that completed the survey, do you feel that you got new specific newcomer feedback that supports this? Because certainly tonight, we have a shadow of my, for me as a politician, I'm sure by by the end of the night, she's ready to go to sleep, but one of the things she noted when she read it was the importance of this strategy. So I just want to double check, does it, did the demographic, did we reach that demographic? And are we confident that this is, that we've nailed the the right recommendations here?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councillor. We'd always love to have better representation of newcomer communities in any of these consultations. It's part of, you know, I would say it's a group that was underrepresented through the survey, not through not through lack of trying, but just challenges in engaging with with those groups. So we pivoted and did our best to try to reach out to other groups that might represent those communities and and hear them within the consultation. So hearing from the BIPOC community, they were involved in a specific focus group, other cultural and event organizers that serve newcomer communities, their input has been integrated into the report, and we're actively interested in hearing more of those comments as we go through the next phase of consultation.
Well, thank you for clarifying that for me. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hazletill. Councilor Nanda?
Thank you, Mayor Burton. I just had one point that I had forgotten to make as well. Under the library master plan, is there, for programming, can we look at multilingual or specific programs for seniors in the library?
Absolutely, we'll take that feedback back. I think that's, we've identified, whether it be newcomer engagement, programming, multilingual collections, is is very important part of of all of the the key strategies from a library service delivery perspective. We expect to that for that to be rolled out through the the new 16 Mile Library as well.
In our ward specifically, we've had multiple seniors groups who have asked to be able to have a meeting place. So I thought if we had specific programming for them through the library as well, that that would that would also help them as well. Thank you.
Councilor Nanda, thank you. Councilor McNeese?
Thank you, worship. Just one quick one. Related to rinks, I saw the recommendation around Canoka Arena, which is the closest rink to Ward One, because we don't have a rink in in Ward One. So I mean, it's an aging facility, and I think if I heard it correctly, maybe you get more uptake with these double rinks now, because they have, you know, a place to grab a coffee and a few other things like that. I guess my concern is, in looking at the town as a whole, we already have a gap in not having a rink in in Ward One of any kind, indoor or outdoor. Canoka is our closest. If that one closes, and it sounds like a double rink is ways out, and I don't even know where the space would be for something like that, seems to me like we're going to have a huge gap on the kind of southwest quadrant of the town related to an indoor or outdoor rink.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. The distribution of rinks is challenging, because we do look for multiple pad arenas, not just from a municipal perspective, although that's favorable, but groups do prefer them from a an organizational tournament support. They can run multiple programs at the same time, they can block book ice to support their program. So, you know, there will be certain gaps. We also, and we do recognize Appleby, Appleby Colleges in in that community, and, you know, maybe maybe down the road, there's opportunities to work with partners such as themselves to to expand those opportunities. And, you know, you've got Canland Ice on the other side, and still as of yet, you know, a location for another facility in the longer term to serve South Oakville yet to be determined.
Okay, and even even Appleby's still not kind of Ward One area, so we still kind of got that gap of not having a rink. So I'll leave that with you, but I think councillor, I fired up councillor Chisholm now, so. Thank you.
I should I should remind council that ward boundaries are not permanent, and periodically we're required to re-apportion to reflect population changes. So what isn't in Ward One today could very well be in a future Ward One. Councilor Chisholm?
Just a comment, your worship. I've lived this for many years, and the the stress we went through with the shortage of ice pads in Oakville, and I know you were a strong proponent in moving forward and getting our ice pads up to standards and numbers in our municipality. I'm just a little concerned if we start knocking them off, knocking these down and not replacing. I have a concern with that. What I would suggest is that maybe if we're looking, and I totally agree with double double pad, it's good for scheduling, good for tournaments, and it's good for a maintenance of one Zamboni for two rinks. There's all kinds of positives to that. However, Canoka and Maple Grove have been, yes, 40, 50 years, whatever the case may be, have accommodated our communities very well. I would not start moving or knocking them down or repurposing them out of ice until such time we have something new coming online. I just don't want to be cut short of ice time availability. And with the expansion, you see what's now with the PWA, Women's Hockey is expanded. We're probably going to have more women involved in hockey, girls in hockey. We've got a lot of new leagues that are happening in hockey. They splintered from, you know, from the regular hockey, minor hockey, now we have private leagues and so forth, looking for ice time and tournaments. So I would be very careful and cognizant of the fact that, you know, taking away ice ice pads or ice time might not be the best thing for the municipality at this point in time, and to look if we're looking for double pad, but let's do the transition where we build one and then take one down if that's the case. Just my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Chisholm. Thank you, sir, for your presentation and your patient answers. Council, I wonder if I could get a mover and seconder to receive the information. Councilor Nanda and councillor Hazletill, thank you. Any objection to the motion there being none that carries? Council, that ends the work of this meeting. It's been terrific working with you, and we are adjourned.